And everyone, and welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board meeting of November 14th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media. Everyone else, given the silence, all electronic devices. And the format for tonight's hearing is any parties wishing to offer comments or testify on any matters before the board, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and if you're representing an applicant, your position. The applicant will present evidence and testimony supporting their proposal, and members of the board can ask questions during, before, during, and after. At that point, then, we'll open it up for members of the public that would like, or any elected officials that'd like to comment on the proposal. And again, the board can always ask questions throughout this hearing. After it's been opened up, the applicant will have an opportunity to address any issues that came up during the comments from the public, and then following that, the board can make a decision to close the public hearing and move to a vote or continue the public hearing if they so please do so. Sitting tonight is the regular members, Mary-Kate Daly, Shannon Greenwell, Rachel Churchill, and Al Porro is here via Zoom. Okay, first hearing this evening is case 23-2561 Endicott Street, Hometown Arcade. This is a special permit continued from September 12, 2023. I believe we have the attorney on Zoom, and I believe the attorney has a request for the board this evening.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Gozda from Victor McQuillie Miller, 28 State Streets, Suite 802, Boston, on behalf of Hometown. We do have a request for a continuance of this matter to the board's December agenda, given we have been informed that the owner of the Commerce Center should hopefully soon be filing an application for a major project special permit that will provide additional information that's germane to not only our application, but to the other special permits pending for the tenants of the Commerce Center as well, which I believe have been scheduled for the December 12 hearing. In addition to that, there has been a traffic and site plan prepared by both the Commerce Center and those tenants that we would hopefully like to submit as part of our record or put together substantially similar traffic plan for consideration of the board. And we just would like some additional time to have that finalized for December, and we think it makes sense for all of these items to be discussed together once the Commerce Center is further along in its discussions with the city.
Okay, they're still at town. Thank you, Counselor. The next meeting is December 12?
December 5.
December 5. So Counselor, the next meeting is December 5, and that will be held here at the Norwood Senior Center at 7:00 PM.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this hearing to December 5, 7:00 PM, to be held at the Norwood Senior Center and also by Zoom?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, a second?
Second.
Second by Mary-Kate. Al, to continue to December 5?
Yes.
That's Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And the Chair, Ann Brooks, yes. Okay, thank you, Counselor. That's been continued. The next case is case 23-3652 Cross Street. This is a special permit. The applicant can approach the podium, and I'll read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on November 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM under the request of Tracy Woods regarding property located at 52 Cross Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the Boston Providence Highway Zoning District. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit under zoning bylaw section 5.4.4 to allow construction of an addition to the existing residential single-family home that would result in an increase of habitable floor area in excess of 25%. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I was going to say Ms. Kent, but it's Mrs. Woods. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Tracy.
So I'm just saying, I'm looking to get a addition, a small addition in the back of my house for mudroom and a bathroom, a non-conforming area.
Okay.
I do have the bulletin here showing that I saw that, and I do have another one at the corner of my neighbors'.
Okay, if you want to give that to Sarah, please.
Do I have the paper? Thank you.
And we do have the plans. And, okay, so it's an addition on the back of the house, and the total square footage of the addition will be, I know your father's here.
Yeah.
What's the, just the total square footage of the addition?
Probably about 144 square feet, I guess.
144, okay. I can print the whole thing. And the total square footage of the property is?
5708 for the lot.
5708 for the lot, and the building is 1445. Okay. Okay, mudroom for the kids and the dogs?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anything else, Tracy? No, good?
I don't think so.
All right, appear, the boards might have some questions. Al, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't at this time. It's the Chair.
Thank you. Mary-Kate?
No specific questions, thank you.
Shannon?
No, just clarifying, it's just a one-story addition off the back where it's an existing two-story.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Rachel?
Yeah, and just another point of clarification, the existing setback appears to be 7.5 feet, and this will actually reduce that encroachment to 7.7 feet, so a couple inches more compliant, basically, but still noncompliant. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, we did receive some letters before I open it up to the public. We received a letter from Mike Lodge. I live at 66 Cross Street. I'm unable to attend the meeting in person or via Zoom. Please accept this letter of support for the proposed project at 52 Cross Street. My wife, Kristen, and I fully support Tracy's project. This project will help keep a great family in our neighborhood. If you have any questions, I could reach out, and there's Mike's numbers there. There was a personal letter, a personal phone call to me from Consetta, GM, or at 60 Cross Street, who also supports this project. And then there is another letter from 73 Cross Street, Mr. Boyle. I've studied the plans for the addition at 52 Cross Street. Can you please notify the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals that I have no objection to the plan? And I'm in favor of granting the special permit to Tracy Woods. And there was a letter from the building inspector, Mr. Pelletier. And Mr. Pelletier says, "This applicant requires a special permit under 5.4.4 as the proposed addition does not meet current setbacks. However, the proposed addition does not increase the nonconforming nature of the home. The building official would support the granting of a special permit in this instance. No other comments or feedback." Mr. Pelletier. You can sit down, Tracy. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter of 52 Cross Street? Is there anyone here on go-to meeting that would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Any further comments for the board before we move to close the public hearing?
Steal the letter back, is there?
Oh, yes. Okay, yeah, you need them all. Just one from Mike Lodge, okay. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Al, close the public hearing?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. What are the wishes of the board just on the setback as it was outlined by the, pointed out by Rachel and also by the building commissioner? And I think that's all we're voting on because, mind me, the 144 square feet into 1445 does not exceed the 25%. So we're just voting, Sarah, on the setback, correct? An increase in the setback noncompliance, right?
You're, yeah, the special permit under 5.4.
Five.
It doesn't necessarily require any findings are run. It won't be substantially more detrimental in that you are consistent with the building commissioner's finding essentially that this does not increase substantially the nonconforming nature of the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mary-Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Al, to approve?
Yes.
Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And Rachel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck. Nice seeing you again. Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, the next case we'll hear will be case 230530 Pleasant Place. This was remanded from the Norfolk County Superior Court, and Mr. Hearn is here representing the applicant. Let me just see if there's a public hearing on this. There is notice, so let me read this, Mr. Hearn. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on November 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM on the remand order of Norfolk County Superior Court, Docent Number 2382-CV000397, Case 23-05, with respect to the property located at 30 Pleasant Place, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the single-resident zoning district. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a public hearing on a decision denying the variance request issued by the board on April 19, 2023, that was appealed and subsequently remanded back to the board by Norfolk County Superior Court for further consideration. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It may be requested by emailing, and this is a new one, COMDEV@norwoodma.gov.
Same people.
Same people. Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and DeBrow at 30 Walpole Street here in Norwood. I'm appearing on behalf of the owner of the property at 30 Pleasant Place, Loretta Braverman, who was here this evening, along with a family member. And this is a matter, as you mentioned in reading the notice, that was before the board. A decision was rendered on a 3 to 2 vote, which was insufficient for the grant of a variance, three in favor, two opposed. The matter went to the Superior Court, and then following discussions between council and with the approval of the board, the matter was sent back here on remand for further consideration. And by way of procedural history, or reference to the hearing that was held last March that led to that decision, the, there was an issue that arose related to a 1978 decision that concerns this property at 30 Pleasant Place, and that decision was viewed, there was some confusion or disagreement as to how that should be viewed, whether it was a deed restriction or simply a condition of the zoning board, a prior zoning board. I think ultimately, the parties came to an agreement that to look at it as a condition in a prior decision, and under the law, a decision of a prior decision may, by a subsequent zoning board, be amended, changed in some way as circumstances allow, or if circumstances may be appropriate. And so we had a disagreement the last time whether the board could even consider it, but I think we've come to an agreement, the board can consider an older decision, a condition of the older decision, and modifying or removing that condition if present circumstances warrant it, just as this board's decisions might in the future be modified by a subsequent zoning board if circumstances change with respect to a particular property, as it might be affected by a decision you make. To go back and remind everybody here and anybody else watching what this is about, my client owns a property off of Pleasant Place that is a, almost a classic pork chop lot. It has a narrow neck of land coming in from Pleasant Place with a width of 15 feet. That is the frontage in an area where the frontage normally is supposed to be 90 feet. The narrow neck of land then opens up to a larger piece of land, not exactly rectangular, but it has about 51,000 feet of area, 51,000 square feet of area. And since 1978 or so, the property has been used for residential purposes. The prior decision of the board allowed this property, notwithstanding the lack of frontage and the lack of lot width through the building, because you've got this 15-foot strip of land that goes back about 150 feet from the roadway. The board, back in 1978, allowed that to be used for residential purposes. What my client would, and on the property are two structures that, one is, that are a real concern in this, the focus of this discussion and application. One is a single-family house that my client lives in. The other is a separate building that has a three-day garage and actually has some living quarters available above it. My client would like to divide this property into two lots so that the three-day garage with some living quarters above it can be made a legitimate single-family dwelling and be appropriate for occupancy and be approved by the building department for that purpose. Now, this is a variance case because we're looking for dimensional relief with respect to the frontage and lot width. We're also looking for a small bit of relief with respect to an existing deck that is by the second building, and on the plan of record, this is on Lot A. The deck is 29.7 feet from the back line, where 30 feet would be required. So we have that slight deficiency, three tenths of a foot with respect to the deck in terms of the rear yard. We have a more serious deficiency with respect to the lot width coming in from Pleasant Place, 15 feet until it opens up to this wide lot that is probably well over 200 feet in width. So frontage, lot width until you get into the main park, and a small bit of encroachment on the rear by the deck. The lot itself is unique in that its shape and its size. Over 50,000 feet, almost at 51,000 feet. It's an interior parcel. It is sitting by itself, surrounded by other houses that face on Dean Street, Palata Road, Birch Road, and the Pleasant Place. And its only access to the roadways have 15-foot strip. How that got laid out, I don't know, but it got laid out many years ago and has been used for residential purposes since the late 1970s. So it's different in its shape. It's unique in its shape, unique in its size. It is like nothing else in the neighborhood, really, in the immediate neighborhood or even going out of ways. It has been listed on the assessive records, not that that's binding on the building department or zoning board or anything, but it is, not the classification is 1090 multihouses. It's had two separate buildings on it for a number of years. But we can't legally use that second building for housing. And so what my client is looking for is relief to allow, as I said, relief from the frontage and lot width, and with respect to that slight deck encroachment, so that the property can be used for two house lots. And the hardship really is that we've got this large lot that, unusually large, it has plenty of room for the two structures to be used for housing purposes. Otherwise, the existing house is very isolated. It becomes a question of comfort and security and so forth to have this house in the interior lot by itself. So my client would prefer to have a second, the second building authorized to be used for dwelling purposes. Her nephew wants to live there, and that would be helpful to her as well as make appropriate use of the property. Even taking away the personal aspect of that, looking at this, the size of this lot, the inability to put it to a use where the lots themselves, in the case of proposed Lot A, will be more than twice as large as a single-family lot in the single-residence district which this is in. And Lot B, where the existing house is, is roughly 29,000 feet in area, nearly three times the required. So they have plenty of room, there's plenty of, there's no crowding, it's an appropriate use of the land, there's no detriment to the public good that would result, it would allow the property to be used as separate properties. My client intends to own them, the time being, her family's owned this property for a great many years. It does not lessen or derogate from the intent of the bylaw. It's encouraging the most appropriate use of land. 50,000, 51,000 feet of land is, it's almost inappropriate for it to be used just for one house, but to put two houses in there would be a much better use, much better use in terms of the need for housing, a much better use in terms of the value of the property and increasing the tax revenue. It's also, you know, a situation where it's not going to put a strain on utilities, it's not going to put a strain on access. My client has told me that this property has been accessed in the past by trucks, by garbage trucks, by ambulances, by the fire department. So we don't run into any question there about any proper access that would create any harm to the public good or any harm to any service rendered by the town. They've got, the proof is the experience of having all those types of vehicles get in and out on that 15-foot strip without difficulty. Plenty of room for them to turn around, and as it would be laid out and is shown on the plan, there's still plenty of room for any necessary emergency vehicles to come and go. So we think this is appropriate. As I said, it's the classic pork chop lot. We talk about that in zoning. We don't always see them that much, but this is one that cries out as a pork chop lot, and it reminds me of a case I had many years ago, almost the exact same layout of a 15-foot strip running back from a street some distance. So we're happy to answer any questions, and we appreciate your taking this time and taking this back on reconsideration. We hope that we're able to get the approval, but we do appreciate your willingness to hear us again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just a couple of things for our information so we know what we're voting on here. The condition that Mr. Hearn referred to is a 1978 variance that imposed a condition, condition number two, that read, "The property is restricted and dedicated forever. A single-residence lot is defined under the Norwood zoning bylaw." So we would be voting to modify that to remove condition number two from the 1978 zoning board approval. So then, Mr. Hearn, we're also voting on frontage. We need, you need 100 feet there, correct? And it's 15?
We need 90 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And it's only had, and the prior board had authorized the construction of the existing house with that 15 feet, but we'd like you to confirm that for two lots now.
Confirm that, and that would be 4.1.1 on the dimensional control?
That's correct.
And the lot width?
Same, is, we only have 15 feet where it should be 90 feet through the building.
And that, in our zoning, that is 4.1.3? Do we need to vote on that or just vote on 4.1.1?
It's, we're asking for relief on all of the dimensional.
Okay, okay.
Those three-dimensional matters.
Yeah.
Lot width?
Right.
Through the building.
Right.
Lot frontage?
Right.
And that minor encroachment of point, of three tenths of a foot with respect to an existing deck off of that garage building?
Off of the garage.
Its rear line?
Okay.
Where 30 feet would be required.
And those?
Otherwise, it satisfies all of the setbacks and area.
Right, so those would all, just so we get the vote right if this goes forward, those will all be 4.1.1? That's my question.
I don't have them in front of me, but the dimensional requirement.
Okay, okay. All righty, I'll open it up to members of the board. Rachel?
Looking at the plan, looking at the application, everything is the same as what we were looking at back in March, no changes.
That's right, we're not changing any, any dimensions, any lot designations or anything like that. This is the same plan that's still with Mr. Toomey prepared, and I think it has a date of February 14.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the plan of record we're using.
Perfect, yeah. I mean, like you said, if only every single lot were as obviously connected to those like shape issues in the variance. So I think this very easily fits that threshold. I'm, you know, generally not, because this was already built and we're approving something that was already built, I typically wouldn't like that, but that's remote to the applicant. It's not something that she did, and we're trying to fix something to bring it into conformity with historic use over many years. So I would be in favor of approving this, understanding that one of the key, I think the key difference here between the prior vote is we would additionally be voting to expressly amend that one provision of the variance, which I also think is perfectly appropriate, and I would support that revision to this motion.
Okay, thank you. Shannon?
No questions.
Mary-Kate?
And just to confirm, the hardship is about the use of the second building on the property?
The hardship is that, you know, we have enough land to divide into multiple lots, except we don't have the frontage. So it's the frontage, the lack of frontage that prevents this property from, that creates the hardship, you can't put it to a use that's more appropriate than just one house in a 50,000-foot lot, interior lot too. If they don't, front of the street, they have no neighbors, if they're looking at fences and backyards and all that, but, and so anybody, whether it's this owner or anybody else that owned this property, they're losing the value of it, they're losing the use of it for, you know, really, in a single-residence district. And there's no harm that would come from it because it's plenty of room for everybody. No harm to neighbors, no harm to, in terms of overcrowding or anything like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Al?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. We'll open it up to anyone that likes to come forward. It's, Dave?
I'm sorry, there's one other thing. I forgot in my rushing in here today, and thank you for taking it to the end of your meeting. I would like to submit for the record letters from two of your butters that expressing their support for this. One here is from Mr. Thompson at 1:00.
I'll read them, Dave.
Okay.
Okay, I'll read them, thank you. Okay, anyone that would like to comment on this matter, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Certainly, my name is Gail Sullivan. I'm on Fulano Road. And one of the things that has not been mentioned today is the meeting that we had in 1992, where it was stated by the board that the apartment above the garage could not be used as a residence because it was not built legally. I do not have a problem with splitting the lot into two single-residence lots, provided that it's done legally with all of the variances. It seems to me that if Ms. Braverman were to approach the current owner of Birch Road, who Mr. McCrack, the original owner, bought the land specifically to prevent Mr. Braverman from putting his trucking business on that lot, if it's possible, she could purchase enough land from the current owner of the Birch Road property, it would be, everything be hungary. The lot is the way it is because of revenge. Mr. Shiguri, when he built the neighborhood, wanted that land. The original landowner refused to sell it to him, so he built Birch Road, therefore enclosing that piece of property. But as I said, I'm a little concerned that the 1992 meeting was not referred to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, hold on.
I'm happy to respond later.
Yep, okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone on go-to meeting that would like to address this matter? Okay, Mr. Hearn?
Thank you. I can read Gail Sullivan's comments. My client had nothing to do with Mr. Shiguri's layout of the neighborhood or revenge or anything like that. My client had nothing to do with any 1992 agreement. My client had nothing to do with the 19, any 1992 agreement. Uh, Mr. Braverman she's referring to is her late father-in-law who, um, may have conducted more business on the site than he should have, uh, but the, I, I think what I heard Ms. Sullivan say is that, um, her concern is that this has not been done legally. And, and that's exactly the situation we're in, and we're trying to make it legal so that if we can create two lots, um, each of them is a separate residential lot, then we can go to the building department and deal with Mr. Pelletier to get the appropriate permits and certificate of occupancy to use the second building as a residential building. So that's what we're trying to do is regularize this, legalize it, and that's what we're asking for your relief on. And then I think we'll end up with, you know, two, two house lot, two houses on a large piece of property.
So right now, it's all one lot?
It is all one lot.
So it'll be?
Yeah, it was, it was a piece that was cut off years ago.
Right.
That backs up to, uh, some of the Birch Road properties.
Right.
There's no access to Birch Road.
Right.
And I think, you know, you, you, that, that's not really available to us to try to create a new, uh, this is less intrusive than building a roadway through the Birch Road if we could even acquire it.
Okay, so if, um, this were to pass, would we have to vote on two residential structures on one lot? Does that?
You can't, you can't authorize two.
Right.
You cannot authorize two principal uses on one lot in, in a, in a residential context.
Right.
So the only way to allow two houses on that large piece of property is to allow them to be, uh, two lots to be created. Now, the planning board has the jurisdiction for the creation of the lots, but the planning board is not going to authorize them to be used for, uh, residential occupancy, um, without this board giving relief.
So you have to go, if this was passed here tonight, you have to go to the planning board, subdivide the lot?
Then we went to the planning board to divide the lots and to show that we've got adequate access and all that, um, but they, they would not be able to give us sufficient approval without this board giving relief.
Right, okay. Okay. Anyone else, uh, have anything?
Just clarification on those points and the distinct roles of the various bodies of the town. In addition to planning board, to the extent that there were any issues with the building itself when it was constructed, permits weren't pulled or whatever, that would be an independent issue of, um, the building department for purposes of compliance and conformity with the building code, which is a distinct issue from the zoning code. So I just wanted to make that clarifying point to the extent that there's issues with the apartment above that.
Yeah, and I, in my, that's a good point, Rachel, on my notes here, you know, one of the conditions we can make, that the, obtain a certificate of occupancy, uh, for the apartment above the garage, uh, with the planning, with the, uh, building inspector, you are correct, yeah. And Ms. Sullivan, we can also condition this that no commercial activities be conducted on either lot, so hopefully.
Thank you, but I still think if they were able to purchase the extra land affiliated with the Birch Road house, that it would be a no-brainer if you were able to buy the land from them.
If, if people don't want to sell, there's not a lot you can do.
I know, I understand that part, but as I said, that was a revenge purchase.
Yeah, no, I get it, revenge is a awful thing. Okay, no, that's fine, you're, we're fine. Um, okay, are there anything else from members of the board? Okay, cut, got a couple of letters that were presented, uh, to the ZBA, um, November 13th. I'm sending this letter because I've come to learn Ms. Braverman appealed the ZBA's decision from last March, and the board is hearing her appeal on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Last March, the neighborhood received a legal notice from the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals about an application Ms. Braverman made to the ZBA concerning a property of 30 Pleasant Place. At the conclusion of the ZBA, did not allow her request, viewing a 1978 variance as a deed restriction. As I learned, the property is a large piece of land within an area of 51,000 fair feet, with one single family home where Ms. Braverman and her children reside, and the second building is a garage, with living quarters on the second floor. Last March, she was seeking to obtain a ZBA permission to divide the existing large two lots, one having an area of 22,000 square feet and the other having an area of 29. I understand she's not planning a new construction, only trying to simply have the property lined divided into two separate lots, with each lot containing one dwelling. The lots are not for multifamilies. Please know, Ms. Braverman, that she, I'm in quiet respect to neighbors, and I support all I, Ms. Braverman, to divide the lots. James, uh, uh.
Thompson.
Thompson, uh, 170, or is that 17 Dean? Is it 170?
170.
17 Dean. And also from 23 Beach Road, uh, uh, help me on that one, it's, uh, a similar letter that also supports the, uh, thing, so.
Uh, Mr. Padula is the name, Patrick Padula, on at Birch Road.
Okay, Padula, okay. And, and the letter marries the other letter, so that's a letter in approval. Uh, we didn't receive anything from the building inspector in this matter, uh, so, uh, do we want to close the public hearing and move to a vote? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to close the public hearing?
A motion's been made to move, uh, to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mary Kate. Al, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. What other wishes of the board? I think we're, just one vote we have to take that doesn't fall under the variance criteria that we, we'll have to talk about, is, um, a motion to, uh, remove Condition Two from the 1978 variance decision of the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals. I think we should do that first and then address the, uh, dimensional controls as variances as presented. So is there a motion to remove Condition Two from the 1978 variance decision of the Norwood, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Kate. Al, to remove, uh, the Condition Two of the 1978 Zoning Board of Appeals decision?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon, yes, Rachel?
Two, um, yes.
Yes.
Condition two, yes.
Two, and, yes, and that condition is now removed. So now we are addressing the three-dimensional controls, 4.1.1, frontage of 15 feet where 90 feet is needed, uh, 4.4.1, lot width, 15 feet at the beginning, as Mr. Hearn explained, it divides out, uh, that is also 15, and we need, it's a hun-
Same, the same 90.
Same thing, 90, okay. And then there's a deck that's in violation of the setback on the 4.1.
Three tenths of a foot.
The three tenths of a foot, so you gotta cut the deck off, right?
Trying to avoid them.
Okay, uh, so, um, in the variance criteria, I, I think certainly, uh, as Rachel pointed out, that the, uh, shape of the lot certainly meets the first requirement. Uh, the second one, is there a hardship? Obviously, there's a hardship with the condition of, uh, of this entranceway and to, uh, have someone that use that structure and be, uh, taxed, uh, appropriately as a residence. I do not believe, uh, there's any detrimental to the public good, it was down there today, it is very well, um, isolated, if you will. We did receive some letters from the neighborhoods and one person speaking against it, and I do not believe that we are, uh, substantially derogating from the intent of the bylaw. So, um, is there a motion to approve the variances as stated by the chairman?
So moved to approve the variance, um, allowing the insufficient frontage, lot width, and rear yard setback as presented in the application?
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Kate. Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al?
I'm not, it, for pork chop lots, this isn't Canton, this is Norwood, but yes, I would go along with it.
Okay, thank you, and I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. One minute, I do want to just amend that, uh, I would ask to amend it that, um, no commercial business is be conducted on the lot, and that, um, the applicant obtained all the appropriate COs for the apartment above the garage, and he has to do that anyway, but I want to put it in the decision.
May I ask on, in terms of commercial uses, so there's no misunderstanding down the road, you're referring to commercial uses that would not be allowed, such as, I mean, a home occupation?
Right.
We're not talking about, you're talking about commercial uses that are not allowed in that district, you want a specific condition on that, we understand and we have no objection.
Correct, yes, correct, okay, yeah.
If you want to amend the vote on that, that point, that's, those two points.
So just, just amend the vote and then, uh, you know you have to go to the planning board, so we don't have to do that. And then just, so, I had these written down, so that, uh, no commercial business be conducted on the lot out, that's not allowed by the current zoning, and that the applicant, um, obtain a certificate of occupancy for the apartment above the garage, which they will have to do anyway, but I'd like to put that in the decision. So is there a motion to amend, uh?
So moved.
The decision moved by Mary Kate, seconded by?
Second.
Rachel, Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al, just, I made two conditions, I don't know if you heard them?
I did, yes.
Okay, and they vote yes, okay. Uh, Sarah, is that good? We get that? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, uh, the next matter before us is case 23-3923 Monroe Street, a special permit. The Norwood, uh, Board of Appeals notices here by giving that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on November 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM on the request of Rick Wellman on behalf of Chris and Kim Visco regarding a property located at 23 Monroe Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062 in the general residence zoning districts. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and also be available for remote petition, participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit under zoning bylaw section 5.4 to allow the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling in excess of 25% of capital floor area. Any zoning relief that may be required and inherents in the ZOON, to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board interested persons. They're encouraged to attend the hearing, make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application, the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing C P E D this time at norwoodma.gov.
Totally.
Monday. Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I gotta ask what happened on that one after the meeting. Okay, is the applicant here? Would you approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record, sir? You're welcome.
Hello, good evening. Rick Wellman, 662 Mass Ave, Austin, Massachusetts.
Yep.
And I have my.
And your role is?
Uh, general contractor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I have my, uh, paper.
Allowing, allowing you to represent them?
We have the copies.
She made sure on the, uh, that I brought it in and showed, showed that I paid for it and it was posted, but, uh, but yeah, so we're looking to do, uh, 450 square foot, one-floor addition. Um, very simple, we're gonna match the existing length of the house and come out 11 and a half feet, 11.6, um, and that's it. We're, we're, we're asking for, you know, 31%, um, to, to put in a, you know, a bigger kitchen, an office, you know, guest room, and another bathroom, mudroom for a growing family.
That's it, this is, these are the plans before us, okay? All right. Any questions, uh, for the applicant from the board? Rachel, I'll start with you.
Um, yeah, it looks like this addition will conform to the side setback, it's 15 feet, and these look like the, other than the stairway, um, will be more than 15 feet, is that right? There's no setback due, uh, needed?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Gary's only issue was just that, you know, we were above that 20.
The 25%. Um, great, thank you, no other questions. No, that was actually my only question as well.
Mary Kate?
Offset, thank you.
Yep. Al, any questions for the applicant?
No, I've got it, this, uh, thank you.
It's tight back there.
Yeah.
It's back there, I don't know, that was me walking in your driveway at about 6:30. I didn't go too far back, but I, I was back. And behind you is the, is the reservoir from the police station, yeah?
Retention point.
Yeah, the retention point, yeah.
We actually now, um, a couple feet on the other side of the fence.
Okay.
After the resident passed away, they left us that, so it looks tighter than it really looks.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, sir. Uh, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please, uh, approach the podium and give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jean Carrara Taylor. I'm a neighbor of Kim and Chris, and it's a pleasure to be able to get to speak for them because they're fantastic neighbors, they've lived there a long time, and without this variance, it changes their lives, it really does, because I've seen the addition and I know why they're putting it on, um, and it's not detrimental in any way to the neighborhood. It doesn't affect, I mean, we look at, I look at their, their, there's a lot between their house and our lot, um, our yard and our home, so I see that area the whole time, and I have absolutely no issues with it. Like I said, it's not detrimental in any way to the neighborhood, but I know it will affect them.
Okay, and your, and your address, what number?
11.
11, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Jean.
So, I.
Okay.
Definitely want you to stay.
Okay, uh, anyone else here? Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor?
I'm Jack Taylor, 11 Monroe Street. I live with the lovely Jean Carrara Taylor for a long time, 69 years, God bless her. I look out on the back porch, and on the porch I see a backyard of, uh, two townhouses that were built, um, next to us after a small little house that Alan Barber St. Seer lived in for many years, they passed away, they tore it down, we have two townhouses. Across the way is Chris and Kim. They're great neighbors, they've been, uh, great neighbors for a long time, they have two wonderful children. Mike is a mail boy, when we go down the Cape, he gets the mail for us, so. They're not only neighbors, they're friends, and I think the, the addition they're looking at, I looked at the, uh, the plans, I didn't know too much about, I'm an electrician, I saw the electrical, looked good to me. And I think it, uh, it'll be, it'll help the neighborhood, and I'm 100% for it, you know, they're good people, and I think this is a, a break if there's a problem.
Okay, and I'll note that the Taylors are both top meeting members for District?
Eight.
Eight, District Eight, okay. All right, anyone else here to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone go-to meeting that would like to speak in favor of this meeting, of this, um, proposal? Okay, I did not receive any letters, and we didn't receive a letter from the building inspector on this one, so, um, are there any more questions from members of the board? If there's not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to congratulate this young couple for investing long-term in the town of Norwood.
Thank you. Let's thank, so noted. That was from Mr. Poro, so. A motion's been made to approve by Mary Kate?
To close the public.
Oh, to close the public hearing, thank you, seconded by Al. Al, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me, because I missed that last meeting. Okay, the public hearing has been closed. What are the wishes of the board?
So moved to approve the special permit under 5.4, um, as presented in the application. as presented in the application.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Kate. Al, on approval?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Best of luck. Thank you.
And Kim and Chris want to thank Al for calling them young.
Have a great evening, everyone. Have a great evening. Okay, a couple of housekeeping things. Sarah supplied us with a calendar, and there were two changes. And July 2nd meeting will go to July 9th. And there was a November meeting on Election Day that, Sarah?
Yeah, so I've got this up on the screen. Al, can you see this?
I can, yes, I can.
Terrific, yeah. So this is amended from the copy that you all received in your packets. A couple of suggestions made by members. One is to move the July meeting to the second week of July to avoid scheduling something over the week of the 4th, where a lot of folks are out of town. The other one was to push the November meeting back a week because the first Tuesday falls on Election Day. But otherwise, there's, there's no changes.
Okay. Is there any discussion amongst the members on the calendar?
No, I think those changes make sense.
Okay, so we'll just take a motion to approve the calendar of the Zoning Board of Appeals for 2024.
So moved.
A motion has been made by Mary Kate to approve the 2024 calendar, and all meetings will be held at the Senior Center, Norwood, and 7:00 PM. And go-to meeting will be available. Seconded by Mary Kate. Rachel?
Yes.
Mary Kate? Yes.
Shannon, yes?
Yes, oh, Shannon. Oh, Jesus, sorry, Shannon. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
It's tough when you sit between two beautiful women. You get all confused.
You're surrounded.
Yeah, I am. Okay, the calendar's been approved, and then we had minutes that we were unable to get to the last meeting, but are able to get to this meeting. We're going to be out of here by 8:00. I don't know when the last time was we were out here at 8:00. So we have meeting minutes from September 12, 2023 minutes. And I've had a chance to give them a quick review. I didn't on my first pass see anything that I had an issue with. Was there anything that any member had an issue